Good evening. We're going to call the order, the committee of the whole for the board of school directors, Daniel Boone Area School District. Tonight is Monday, October 14th, and it is 7:32 PM. And we'll start with our pleasure and leisure.
I would just be glad of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Yes. Can you do the special voting? Yeah. Yeah, we are, we are actually going to start off with our special voting meeting tonight. So Mr. Wolf, if you could please do your vote call.
Yes, Mr. Scott.
Ms. Aubrey.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Gerson.
Here.
Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mr. B. Scott.
Mr. Wolf here.
Mr. Rathke.
Here.
Ms. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Scott.
Here.
A. President.
All right. Do we have any agenda edits? Special voting. So procedures for public participation, they are in the back page of your agenda. If you'd like to address the board, simply come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the board, and you'll have three minutes to say whatever you'd like. Agenda edits, any presentations by public on any agenda items for special voting meeting?
Mr. Scott, at the June 17th meeting, the board once again voted to raise our taxes. A statement was made that you would have sufficient funds for this coming year, but it was talked about the dire straits the district would be in after that. And then I see a four-year collective bargaining agreement. So, two questions. One, what is the total cost of the additional salaries and benefits in this four-year package? And how are you going to pay for it?
So I'll have to ask that thing, Ms. Haynes, could you just correct my math, make sure I have this right, but the four-year total increase is somewhere that you heard of 1.7, right, 1.77 million? That's total over the four years. And...
Oh, you have an year percent.
Okay. And then they, that's a year-over-year annual increase to employees of 2.49%.
Second question, where's that go, I think?
Yeah, so, well, I guess, like with any other contract that we do of this nature, whether we increase their salaries or they remain steady, if we do not have, we cannot presume any tax increases over the next three years, in which case, if the new board who will be filling some of our four empty spots, if they decide not to raise taxes, then that cost will come from our fund balance, and it'll also come, we'll also be using some refinanced savings and bonds to help cover that cost, but in general, I mean, without the increase in their salaries, the taxes would be raised regardless unless we cut staff significantly.
And the 1.77 million, that includes benefits?
That is just salaries.
Well, salaries go up, pension.
Correct.
So it's more than 1.77.
It is, that's just the salary increase over four years.
Thank you.
Ms. Haynes, we're transferring money from the, the fund for our Peasars fund, can you tell me which that was from?
Yes, we have an assigned fund of Peasars allocation that's about 1.7 million, and for the audit, our auditors have suggested it, and across the county, it's the same thing in every district, having the 1.79 million to stabilize Peasars isn't necessary to have that in an assigned balance. So the money that we did not, we didn't put those salaries because we weren't sure where the contract negotiations were going, we have a item on the agenda to move 700,000 from that assigned balance into the unassigned to cover the cost of the contract and the benefits, let it forward, and then it'll be...
And just for some context, Mr. Martino, so one of the trade-offs for the increase in salary was a long-term desire of the board to significantly change the grid, set the salary grids within the contract. So, cost aside, the grids have been tweaked at, with, you know, to be completely transparent, at the effort of the union, that was essentially our one ask in this contract negotiation.
I saw the grids, I mean, they were part of the attachments, so...
Yeah, so I mean, the, you know, yes, it's not a small amount of money that the salaries are increasing, but the average increase to the salaries is modest, it's not, it's not excessive. And, long-term, the incremental increase in salaries, we don't have that, you know, tenure teacher base hanging over our head like we did with the previous contract where, you know, a matter of 10 people get to the final step, and you're looking at, you know, $100,000 in additional salaries just in one, you know, group of 10 people, like where the, the money has been spread out, where the raises are fairly consistent throughout the 15 steps, whereas today, they started at $900 and ended at $9,000. And so, every year, you had groups of teachers moving on, and you know this, but every year they move up, the salary increase has only increased, and then that doesn't even include any changes in education and credit. So, you know, I think, in the long run, you know, for the next several boards, at the very least, these grids give us an opportunity to have an increase that we can manage, whereas the old grid really forced our hand to make decisions that we didn't want to make.
Well, I had to put you on the spot tonight.
Oh, I understand.
You won't be here next June when you're raising taxes.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public?
Can I make a motion for item 7A?
Second.
1 through 4.
Second.
I'll wait until the next one.
Yes. So we have a second?
Second.
All right. Yes.
You did?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rathke.
Any more discussion on items personnel 7A, 1 through 4?
All right, 1 through 4.
Seeing none, we have a vote call vote?
Yes, Mr. Scott. Ms. Aubrey.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gerson.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Rathke.
Yes.
Ms. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Jeff Scott.
Yes.
Motion passes A-0.
Make a motion for item...
Hold on one second, if I could ask Mr. Gerson.
If I could interrupt for a second, Mr. President, I would like to introduce a member that was just approved by the board of our administrative team, a new member. It's Mr. Stephen Biggestaff, who will be our Director of Facilities and Contracted Services, and he's standing right here in the audience, I'd like to publicly welcome him to the Daniel Boone Area School District family, and looking forward to working with him as part of our administrative team moving forward, so welcome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome aboard. All right, Mr. Seth, where are you at?
Thank you, I have a motion for item 7B.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Olson?
Aubrey.
Oh, no, Aubrey. All right. Do we have any more discussion on items under personnel, A, or actually, item B, sorry?
I just want to thank both committees that did the negotiating, both on the board's side and on the teacher's side, I know that a lot of time was put into this on both sides. There could have been times for, you know, things to get in the way, and it seemed like cooler heads always stepped up, and so I appreciate the cooperation from both sides to get this done, so thank you everybody that put in the time and effort to crunch the numbers and make this work.
Yeah, I mean, we literally started our discussions November of last year, so, you know, we're 11 months in, and neither side leveraged their legal representation, which saved us quite a bit of money, Mr. Martino, by the way. But it also kept things at a more civil, a more amicable level, and, you know, the fact of the matter is that there were ups and downs throughout the process, you know, there was a lot of happy, smiling nights, and then there were also nights where people stormed out of room, and we lost our tempers and said things we didn't want to say, but in the end, I think both sides stayed true to the goal and to the mission of the process, and, you know, I think it's a testament to what I would say is a much improved relationship with the union and the board and the administration as a whole. So, I'm very happy with the contract that we came up with, I do feel like it's fair, I do feel like it's going to benefit the district, you know, long before, long after I'm gone, and, you know, which is important, because as we've seen, we got kind of saddled with a challenging contract from a previous board, and it put us in a tough spot. So, again, thank you to the folks who were part of the, the committee, and also thank you to all the folks from the union who, who've stepped up and spent a lot of time and blood and tears in this process, but, so anyway, anybody else?
I'll add my voice there as well, again, thanks to the union, and especially Mr. Scott from the board, because apparently Mr. Scott did most of the work on the board's side, and the administration as well, Ms. Haynes and Dr. Cooper, and, you know, and we did, you know, we are, we have three more service days, so hopefully they'll be productive days that administration and teachers can collaborate on to, to improve across the board, so, so again, I think it's a fair contract for both sides.
Yeah, and actually, I'm remiss for not saying, you know, aside from the financials and, you know, which is typically what a board focuses on, right, right or wrong, there were a lot of good things that were in the contract around, you know, some of the, just cleaning up some language, and also helping our new superintendent work with the professional staff to come up with some improved programs, and, and that was also part of the contract that I think is going to ultimately really help the kids and also our teachers. And then lastly, a big thank you to Ms. Haynes for a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of phone calls and impromptu stop-ins by me, and, you know, last-minute data asks and more Excel spreadsheets than, than she cares to remember, but, but anyway, it was a team effort, and I'm glad we're, we're sitting here tonight, so, thank you. All right, carry on. Mr. Wolf, if you was...
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gerson.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes. Mr. Rathke.
Yes.
Ms. Olson.
Yes.
Ms. Aubrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jeff Scott.
Yes.
Motion passes A-0.
All right.
Any final presentations by the public on any issues on special voting meeting? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we'll move immediately into the committee of the whole. If we could, Mr. Wolf, have our vote called again, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scott. Ms. Aubrey.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Gerson.
Here.
Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mr. B. Scott. Mr. Wolf, here. Mr. Rathke.
Present.
Ms. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Scott.
Here.
Any, any agenda edits for the committee of the whole? Okay. And there will be executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel issues. So first, item under number six, finance, any more discussion on items 6A through K?
One, one question for Ms. Haynes and Mr. Gerson, who's here too, so perhaps he'd... So I think item B is one of the most important power, right, the key zone, opportunity zone, is that, is that the last year for...
2020 is the last year, so it expires December 31st, 2020.
And then at that time, it'll be reassessed as well, because if you have such a town for the...
It'd be zero at the assessment because of the KOC, but yes, it'll be reassessed, and then the school district would receive some funds in 2020.
KOC, is it a five-year tax re, redevelopment?
It was, initially it was a 10-year, and then when the 10-year expired, we borough rolled into a seven-year instead of the 10-year, and only a portion of that property, the township chose not to extend every portion of property to the KOC, so when Berksboro Power came in, they built the whole facility on the borough.
Oh, now it's half, you can have...
It's two-thirds of boroughs, one-third union, and they built it all in the borough portion because of the KOC.
Okay. So KOC, so what you're saying is KOC worked?
KOC worked, it worked in the borough, at the old steel mill, all those places are full, and the lorry worked because we got their grocery store as well, so both those and, both those things worked.
Any other questions on items A through K from board members? I assume we'll have some, with the concrete bid?
Yes, I already have one in, I'm just waiting for another one, possibly, maybe not.
Yeah, so what's, I mean, is there artificial, how do we handle it when we only get one bid?
Well, that's where we were before, we were only getting one response, so what Super said was he put together, not in RFP, but in basically just a bid offering out on our website, so we have several people that are calling in, we did an amendment to it, we have to wait a certain amount of timeframe, we have people come in, but now what that does is, just to be transparent, it's going to increase the price, the price that we discussed in facilities, because now all prevailing wages are in effect, so it's almost going to double what we had already done, and I have a feeling we're going to be doing the same thing with payment. And the payment, the first bid that I got in that was actually, it wasn't, it was over a million dollars, but it already had the prevailing wages already calculated, but I have not been able to get anybody else to respond.
I don't understand the time, what's the, how's the timing impact, the prevailing wage?
Well, it's the fact that we had to go out for bid, and then after each project is over, it is $19,500, and we have to calculate the prevailing wage. So now we have to, we advertise that we go out, like, the way that it came in before, there were no prevailing wages in it, because if I would have got three quotes, we could have just moved, but now that we have to do the bid, it has to be probably a little higher than the prevailing wage, and then it's declined.
And when you break projects up like that, I just know on the municipal side of things, when you have the larger projects, and you try to break them, through projects to avoid the bidding, you can get pinched.
Yes.
So, in the long run...
We're better off.
We're better off, because it does look like you're piecemealing projects, and you, and you're probably going to get trolled doing that, or you're at least going to get your hands slapped the first time, but the second time you do it, you're going to get trolled, so it's probably cleaner, and the way we're doing it, yeah, unfortunately, your costs are going to go up, just adding the prevailing wage 25 to 30%.
But it sounds like if we had done it in one, one big project, it would have been that same, similar cost.
Well, we would, we would have done a project here, let's just say, we could, we, for not knowing everything, you do a project at B E C for X amount of dollars, then you do another project at high school for X amount of dollars, you keep it all under the bid threshold, so...
No, but I'm saying, if we had just done it all as, all as one big project from the, from the get-go...
We would have had a bid, because it would be over the 19,000 threshold.
And we weren't aware, so we got the first concrete bid back to B E C, now, the one school that we had to do B E C was under that threshold, so we went ahead and started that work, I think it leaves 19 contracts, and that's supposed to be done at the end of this month, for legality purposes, but the rest of them, every other school came over that threshold, and that's where it was like, okay, we need to send it out. But now it's even going to be more, because now they have to add prevailing wages, and everything, and in fact, we have the way to see other people come in.
Well, yes, now, the other question is, is now, with this delay, is it, is this work, is it, this is, we're not going to be able to get it started before winter?
It's possible, we might be able to do the one school, I'm still...
Well, I guess we haven't got, is if we, I'm assuming the answer is no, we're not going to get it done before winter?
Not early, not early.
Which means that the damage and the need for work would probably change between now and the spring.
Shouldn't be too drastic.
It shouldn't be too drastic, I don't think it's going to change. They are all aware of that, if they're not able to get anything done by the end of this year, and that's, that's in the bid, then the rest of the work will be done, so they should be putting in their prices.
TR, we've reported the one section, talk about it.
The one school you've all already proven sign that, that was Berksboro, that had to be done, yeah, because we're leasing that building, from a legal perspective, it's the appropriate thing to do. But hopefully, I'm optimistic, I'm thinking we can get high school funding, so.
Okay.
I'm still hoping.
And how about the snow removal?
Snow removal, there was one that came in, and we'll have to make ready for you to vote on, how some prices and available gather, so we can kind of get it in. We just opened that at 1:00 this afternoon.
We're, all right, we're by the F, we, so I don't recall how we got the facilities yet, is that...
That was supposed to be on the agenda for last month, me and Mr. Gerson have looked over a lot of that, if you'd like to share anything?
Yeah, I can say Kathy actually did an excellent job, she brought in several vendors to offer us different pricings, and we then touched base when, when, because they can get, they get a little overwhelming, because not every vendor, they're not always apples apples, because some of them give you the actual costs, they'll give you the cost just of the facility, not the added costs, so their bid may look a little, or the number may look a tiny bit smaller, but at the end of the day, you know, it could be the same or higher, and so she did a very good job navigating through that, getting the different companies to respond, and dealing with that, it's a lot of information, and just so you guys know, they need every account, every electric account, every gas account, all that data, it's a lot of work, and Kathy handled it really well, so I want to, you know, congratulate her on, on that, because that is a lot of work to do. And, you know, we reached out, I think the company that gave us the pricing that, that ended, and the contract that we liked the most, this company might have to say it or do it the way it's all.
I mean, that, that's the recommendation.
Yeah, that would I give, too.
So, I mean, I do believe, I mean, I don't think it's a problem giving it, I suggest that the IGS is the one that, and we both agreed on that, not even knowing, even on his side, I had on my side, and we came in the middle, but that's the one that we're recommending through all the data, if anybody has any questions or concerns or anything about that, I don't know, you're probably not going to be here the next week.
No.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're going to touch base with them, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I mean, I did...
It was in the...
I've done them several times with the borough, so I knew a lot of the companies coming in, who were going to, who were going to submit stuff, and...
And that, that's separate from our, that demand response remains against events separate, or...
I don't know.
It's kind of in the, if they do the same thing, they do the demand response, whenever you take about a casual company, it's...
Any other board discussion? Any public comment on items under finance?
As Mr. Rathke and Mr. Gerson and a few others are aware, we wanted the administration, administration building to move directly to the high school from Matthew Brook instead of coming here, so I'm glad you're moving, but I have three questions, what's the cost of the move, how do you intend to monetize this building, and one of the questions that came up six years ago was the security of the new building for the public visiting the administration.
I'll go with the cost, we're not going to see, we're going to be leasing out this side of the building from the, where the reception sits, all the way to my office, and we still have space over here, we could lease, but this whole side is for Berks encore is coming in, they'll lease that, their lease will start in April, their first, their lease is about, it's about 45, 46,000 a year, it's going to cost us approximately one year of that lease, to get us all moved in there, with the walls, building the walls, getting the security, getting the fob entrance, and I guess painting lines up there for people to park, I don't think we have to do anything to the paving out there, but the cubicle setup for the confidential secretary, and everything, all that, so it, it won't exceed 45,000.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, item 7A and B, under programs, any more discussion? Mr. Wolf, any concerns about the overnights? Yeah. But they're not boiler tapped, which is good.
Yeah, at least they're out of calories, yeah.
All right. Any more discussion on those items? Any public comment on programs? All right, presentations by board members. Service secretaries, forefathers?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Scott.
All right. B C I U?
Dr. Scott, last meeting was not to, honestly, I changed a lot of title, pretty title one, title two, title four stuff that we did for districts, and you'll be participating in that as well, taking advantage of the services that the I U provides. I did forget to mention that, in two meetings previous, the, which I think is a nice piece for the I U, we did approve a new five-year agreement, and the I U does run the Thomas Ford Center for Reading School District, which is for their troubled youth program, so we got a new five-year contract, they like services we provide, so that was nice, nice of the I U to get. I did see, I think from Dr. Cooper, I believe, you know, there's upcoming trainings, I know, I think Ms. Olson sent you or heading out to one of those.
Morning.
And that's that, all right, and then there is some upcoming training for new board members that's required by state law, that will actually be at the I U, and there's also some advanced training for current board members, if they're so interested, I believe that information's also already been distributed by Dr. Cooper, so for current board members who want to take advantage of that, for more advanced training, they're open to attend, you can actually go to both if you want, but you're not required to go to the other one, only new board members are required, but it's nice that it's actually in, in county here for current board, so you're going to pay your dues. Any, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rathke. Brooks Career Tech?
Yes, we had our last meeting at the left center, and the focus of the meeting was, initially was to look at the project, the welding building project that is well underway, ahead of schedule, roughly two months ahead of schedule, due to the really nice weather they've encountered, so it looks like they're still on scope to, to complete the building in time for students to take, you know, take part in the programs beginning of next year, so they'll be filling out a lot of adult students, just so you know, this program has been maxed out for several years, and they've had to turn a significant number of students away, both, you know, the... Both, you know, the adult students and the older students. So that'll be a very good opportunity for the Career Tech Center. And the project is well underway. And other than that, it was routine approvals, some buzzing contracts and so forth that we approved. And just to say, that was my last meeting there. I'll be on vacation for the next meeting. This operator is going to attend in my place. So for any current board members or people in the public are interested in running for the board, I strongly encourage that you seek opportunity to be the board representative or alternate for the Career Tech Center. Because it is very different from the normal board politics that you would run into at your home district. Because when you're there, everyone's focused on a single, a single task. You're all looking at the same goal. So it's very refreshing. Plus gives you the opportunity to network with other board members from the other districts. See what they're doing with common problems we may have or things that they're running into. We've talked a lot over the years about negotiations and, you know, budget, budgets and those type of things. So it is a great opportunity and I would recommend highly for any of the board members that are all over to take that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Ms. Sweet. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay, so.
Can you, can you help around with the mic? Is it not, you probably have to turn on the side.
That helps. Okay, so the moving forward small schools. The Jenny Moon Primary Center is going well and is thriving. It appears to continue to prosper as its wave continues. Students have been happy in the iPad time, which is a dedicated time where students have the opportunity to play educational games in the iPads. Along with that, those students have been enjoying their time at the school so far. Saying that they love me, Seth, and the teachers as well. And as they're close to the end of the post-trimester school plans, are continuing to build skills. They got introduced in the post-trimester school year with the PDIS training and courses that show and explain the expected procedures and mannerisms to keep everyone safe and happy in the post-trimester. So for the MD, the media center, this unit has been going very well for them as well. There are some new suggestions and ideas that I brought up in this one-on-one talk with them. One of the objectives, it should occur, I use seal chat trash, so miss collection thing. It is known that we are waiting for the custodian staff. However, the AICC website did allude to a new club idea. We want to keep the school clean. School would be hoping that there was no trash, she said. This idea would be that the club would help keep the school clean. All this idea was not such a specific clean mentions. It still stands as a valid idea that could be an official type of school. But while AICC's years have been successful, students have noticed that a lot of changes from the building and there have been minimal concerns. The biggest request is what resets supplies, what allows now a problem or quiet solution. Students of the school are the ones who have upcoming events, including the band went to concert, activities such as band concerts often told students, which reflects well for the school. But then even middle school, the post-trimester school has progressed fairly well. On the twenty-seventh of September, the middle school had a welcome back dance, which has seemingly gone off that any major songs. The anti-bullying program, oh, yes, has been implemented in the middle school. And while it did seem that some students felt more positive about the others, it does seem to be the program as a whole has still been focused, educated students about bullying and how it should be addressed. Now, the school taking spirit on the 15th, which would accumulate in public environment. For the middle schools also starting to connect clubs to all ways middle school, allowing students to stay in both physical and educational clubs. The middle school students will be creating the No Place to Hate Center this month, which is one step closer to creating a No Place to Hate School. No Place to Hate is an anti-defamation program that creates violence for all students of five. All that shows the middle schools doing well so far is to improve our school. And finally, the high school, this school's going to be a big star. The past month had a successful blood drive. And we quote the most successful homecoming, the homecoming of the health happening because it's past weekend, the bonfire dance, which is coming up this weekend. So many other base events are happening and should be successful. The iPad, well, I see it has a few glitches, but it is the most successful last year. And the new schedule reflection shift, Edmonds is suggesting to have a more positive responses now after a whole month of this. Club is still membership at the high school, high and so is at.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sweet, for a always thorough and informative report. You love it.
I actually have a question.
Go. You're in.
And I might get this wrong, but I think in Dr. Cooper's report, I saw that some high school kids now going to the other schools to kind of promote, like that was homecoming or school spirit or what was the exact, I think Mr. Spores had that. I'm just curious. Yeah, I'm curious if we get some feedback on that. It seems like a neat thing to get some of the high school kids into the other schools is to see, build that school spirit. So I'm curious how that works out.
I think they might be coming to recess this year.
Well, they need recess supplies. Well, I'm not sure.
It's like a graduation.
That's why I was like, yes, was, but I'm not sure.
It's a recess supply.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Yeah, I'm very curious. We'll feedback on that.
All right, legislative report?
I do not have anything to report at this time.
All right.
I have one other report for the Burke's earned income tax collection here. They only meet quarterly. Their meeting was on the twenty-sixth of September. We had extensive executive session for litigation matters. But the good thing that happened was that they hired a new executive director. Her name's Rebecca Clausar. She's, she's had a long experience in financial experience in private sector, but most recently she had been the CFO at Boyertown High School. So they have somebody ready to jump right in. And the other thing that we did was the long and continuing saga of them trying to get their processing of payments, both from the employer side and from the resident side electronically. They have hired yet another company to make that happen. And so we'll see how that goes.
Kind of interested to see how this work happens, keep spreading throughout the county.
Well, it's one of, it's other than ready. It's the biggest employer, it's the biggest K-12 employer in the county. So it's not spreading.
For everywhere. All right. Thank you, Ms. Olsen. Any public comment on board presentations? All right, same thing. We've got item nine, personnel. Items A, B, and C. Any more discussion?
I just had a question. Are we, are we replacing the, it looks like some of our special aides that are stepped down? Is there a plan in place to replace them?
Yes, that's correct. They're currently being advertised for.
Okay. Big area being.
I have a question from the coaches. I see we found a girls' basketball coach, which is good. We saw a number of other openings. Do we have candidates?
I'm going to defer that to Mrs. Schmidt, who's behind us, if you could respond to that.
Yes, we do. We tried to do a job open, we reopened it. But we do have some internal commitments and candidates. Excuse me, sir. It's regular.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt.
Any other board discussion on personnel? Any public comment on personnel? Item ten, enrollment. Any more discussion? Any public comment on item ten, enrollment? Who's Olsen? You know, she's.
You want to come back?
Yeah, we'll, we'll skip, we'll come back to item eleven, extracurricular committee.
We did not need, we never need scheduled, we did the end of the month, so.
Okay. Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation committee, Mr. Schruble or Mr. Dursow?
I'll do it one last time. Thank you, Mr. Schruble. I do want to thank him for stepping up to take over this committee. As you guys see on the agenda, there are several projects that are happening on the facilities side of things. Our facilities are in dire need of a lot of work. And I would just encourage those that are on the board that are going to be remaining to please not neglect the facilities. We're paying the price for years of neglect. And as you can see, those costs mount, mount, mount up. So Mr. Schruble's got a lot on his shoulders coming up with this committee as far as a lot of projects coming up in the near future. He's going to need the support of anyone else that was feeling on that committee. So again, Mr. Schruble, thank you for stepping up. Thank you, Ms. Taines, for all your work that you did this fall, getting a lot of these projects that did. And doing the research. I appreciate that as well. And I just encourage board, again, please do not neglect facilities because it's going to come back and bite us.
I think one administrator that we need to vote on, Mr. Schruble, running in as the chair for that?
I make my own decision.
I would assume so.
Mr. Schruble being chair of the facilities.
Yeah.
See how I said you got there, Mr. Schruble?
Do we have a second? All in favor of Mr. Schruble assuming responsibility of the facilities committee chair?
Did you want to make sure to vote other, other?
You're right.
Want to step up?
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Schruble. Best wishes.
You earn every penny, you know. Earn every penny.
Yes, right. We're going to jump back to, actually, before I do, public comment on facilities and transportation. We're going to jump back to policy. No.
CNN.
Yeah, CNN, curriculum instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We had a lot to cover today. The two things that we didn't need to vote on were, we got some feedback on the integrating the whole K through twelve with continuum of school counseling services. We've, it was part of our conference of plan at our school. You know, the changes that we made to prioritize bringing the sports that we see a little bit more visibly in the high schools down to the level of grades. And so we got to know better on how that's going. Before I continue, almost everything we discussed, Mr. Midnight has sent the whole board copies of all the collections that we got today. That gives you a little bit more detail than what I'm going to do right now. So you can look at that bigger before we vote on some of these things at the next board meeting. The other thing we didn't vote on that we talked about was the high school course book. We got a preview early because we won't have a meeting in December. We wanted to get that started early. The copy to be, we think that by the regular meeting in November, we should be able to vote on it, which means it'll be ready in draft by the committee and the whole in November to review. We got, we got our initial copy of it today for the first time. So, okay. So for the things that we needed to actually make a recommendation or not on. There is an intrudist pre-apprenticeship program partnership that we are currently piloting. We have one student in this program already. It is a program that would be in conjunction with ABC Associated Government Contract Agency. The way it was explained to us is that there are students that do not enter into the BCTC program for H-back plumbing. I think there are six disciplines, six, seven disciplines that they can enter into this apprenticeship program for. We're trying to catch students that maybe did not start with a three-year program in BCTC in sophomore year. This is through junior and senior year. We would have, we would do some training with teachers here at the school. There would be a little bit of stuff where they would have to actually go out on site to do things with bigger equipment. So three, four, four days or three days? Three days that they would have to travel to onsite to, in the Vanheim area, correct? The cost would be six sixteen, six sixteen? Six sixteen per student. Right now, like I said, we have one student in the program. Okay, forty? Forty. We wanted it to be available for maybe forty students first year?
Yeah, well, I think often we'll get to forty.
We'll get there.
We feel like we're missing forty students if the population.
Yeah, these would be students that didn't make the decision to go to BCTC early enough. And it's, it is not everything that BCTC offers. So it's not supplanting that. But this is not something that they offer. That would be a complete free apprenticeship program for students that is only the two-year program. Because for these same disciplines, if you want to go to BCTC, you have to start sophomore year. And so there are students that haven't made the decision where they want to be by sophomore year. We might be able to better serve them. And when they're ready to, when they're out of here, they'd be ready to move right into the apprenticeship program. And be ready for the workforce. We voted three oh to improve moving forward with the, with the inter enrollment partnership. To recommend for guests to vote yes on it. And that would be something that we would put more in recommendation the next board meeting, I guess.
Can we, can we dive into that a little bit?
I don't, I don't hear you.
Can we dive into that a little bit? Or just make sure that's here. So what, what are we, what piece are we teaching here on, for those students?
So they will do, just as we do with the one ball, they will bring our, some of our staff members certify them in a handful of areas. But on the presentation, they have, you see there are, I believe, nine modules. There are two or three that we would, or probably could not put the equipment together, rigging, materials operations, basically forklift. All train forklift. But other things like, you know, construction math, communications, employability, OSHA. Those are things that our staff can be trained in a one-ball model that we can offer here on site. Obviously, it's cost per vehicle transfer of students. A significant number of these are demanded.
Right. So if we're, I mean, we're not, there's no like extra equipment we need to buy that states have to.
There is some hand tools and power tools, which there's, we've approached in hopes that we will have approval from this board. The foundation, the foundation is favorable to supplying hand tools and power tools.
And we actually have teachers on staff now that are going to be able to handle.
Well, we do teach tech ed. So, yes.
So what is the, was it six, six, six sixteen, was it?
Six hundred and sixteen dollars.
So what is that actually?
It's text books for classes. There's a per person cost for lubricant class. There's a per person cost for the OSHA, because the OSHA has to be certified, that has to be like an OSHA per class. And so there's a per person, there's a per person cost for the certification for teacher to teach the OSHA portion. The transportation that will need to send the kids to Vanheim. And that's like, that's minimal because for the overall year, but it is a cost. Again, like power tools, hand tools, we are looking to try donations for that. So that would not have been included in six sixteen. If we failed to get donations, it would increase the cost. But that is the only, that's the only thing that we do that's not included in this cost per student.
And the rigging, rigging and the materials handling. And the rigging, rigging and the materials handling, like you said, those are onsite of the Manhattan location. And I, I, I'll pull you up from it. It's about a thousand dollars to do that course, but it makes a few cents.
Now, is this, are they actually working with contractors or are they, or?
Yeah.
With the association, ABC, they're, they have this site that they do?
Okay, so, so ABC, Associated Builders and Contractors partners with people in the construction field.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an association that belongs to your contractor.
If you're an adult learner and you want to become an apprentice, then your company sends you there. They've started an element of pre-apprenticeship program, which is certified fashion. And then, next, they sent us a list and I passed it in there for thirty first county trade companies that will partner. And our students will be able to look right into job opportunities, because you're coming out, that was a credential, a pre-gradual credential, which now they don't have to pay the money, a thousand dollars, so that's kind of what's in it for the contractors.
So, what about, like, these kids get injured, is, is their insurance protecting us or them?
ABC is insured, and so they're insured and we're insured, just like our students would be if they got hurt, besides.
Okay. So, so just to be clear, the, the end result of the kids not through this program is placement or?
Placement.
They would be continuing?
They would be prepared, yeah, they would be prepared to be, um, employment in an apprenticeship program in, you know, in one of those very much needed positions within the state or elsewhere. But, you know, it is something that's been identified need, that we need more people who are trained in electrical, trained in plumbing, you know. So, they, it's, it's a pre-apprenticeship program. It gets them ready for the apprenticeship.
So, do they, does that mean that they're completed the apprenticeship faster than someone who just graduated high school and went there?
It could be, it could be that.
Good jumpstart.
Yeah, so, this credential carries a national credential. You can record it to anywhere in the country. And you are basically a year ahead of where you would be.
And you don't have to pay that cost of the, I think, clawed-in enrollment of the apprenticeship program?
Most apprenticeships are three to four years.
Yeah.
As you're aware, this is, you're only one year in to those elements, which everyone has to take these nine modules in their apprentice program. So, you have these nine modules knocked out, and they obviously get a good depth of your concentration.
Any other questions? Ms. Alton, will you finish or will you stop?
Oh, no, I got a lot.
All right. As you were.
So, the next thing is another partnership, a career readiness partnership with RAC, where we currently do a lot of partnerships with RAC, a lot of individual classes that, with dual enrollment. But we also have one that enables us to give our students a associate's degree by the time they graduate here in general studies. That is, that is our, that is our first actual degree program partnership with RAC. And, you know, our first group of students that will be able to take advantage of that will be graduating not this fall, this summer, but the following summer. But this is another career readiness partnership that we are piloting. We, the offer was that we would offer pre-apprenticeship in two identified need areas. One for medical assistance and one in pharmacy tech. These would enable these students, once they, once they finish this, if they, if they, once they complete the program, the career readiness certification program, they would actually be able to go out and get a job on their way when they graduate here. There is a cost associated, just as with the, um, associate's degree, where the, the parent would be paying up for the cost, is that correct?
Two pieces.
Okay.
So, there's, there's a non-credit certification, which you just described, and there goes credit. Once they're for credit, parents will pick up. And non-credit ones are analogous to the CTC model. CTC doesn't offer this particular piece, so this is another area of cost. Is either fractionalized of the CTC or, or, or the CTC depending on how long the program is, how many courses.
Right, so if a student went here until, until graduation, just senior year, and then went to a two-year degree program for either of those, the, the, the idea is that while there is some cost for the parent, they could probably do that, do that certification, maybe less expensively while they're, while they're doing it, while they're here. And this is a pilot program that, that we're recommending. They, we have a long list of credit certificate programs that we might be able to offer to continue to be successful. Early childhood director, business management, accounting, with, there's like a long list. But this is the pilot that we're, that the, that the administration is recommending to go forward with. And we, we would advocate going, the, the committee would advocate going forward with it. Any questions on that one?
No, I guess, I just have a philosophical question around why high schools have turned into colleges. And I'm trying to understand, just in general, like, what the benefit is, like?
I can speak for that, right? These aren't real college classes.
Well, I mean, they're, if they're not real college classes, where they're being offered real college credits, and then they don't have to take those real college classes when they enroll in a college. So, whether they're real college classes or not.
It seems they will again, or not, they're not.
No, I know, I'm, I'm just saying in general, like, there's.
This particular one is intended that you'd be done and you'd be out of the workforce after, after you graduated. This is particular too. You'd be out of the workforce. You wouldn't be going on to college after this. I mean, if you eventually wanted to get a four-year degree, you could.
But the mandate from the state is, you know, it's college degree, business chapter, it's been like this. So, this is in alignment with that, okay? Whereas, obviously, students, our students who want to, to, to and four-year degrees, that's a separate conversation, but they do define. This is a group of students who are right now sending out to the high school to college that may not have records and skill to get meaningful, or, you know, that can be given a sustainable living. These programs help do that. Where there's a miss between the CTC and this space for this to become a conversation, which means the CTC doesn't offer a one-year program. What they do is operate a one-year opportunity for you to start and you can continue another year or two with them. And that is an out, is me to underweight in the CTC's adult program. So, the reality is, we can deliver students out into the workforce directly, and they can get meaningful. The farm tech is a twenty-five dollar an hour job right away now. So, that's part of our, I think, obligations to help students to be ready to engage in career development.
And that, and it's, the three, three United standards indicate that our students should be career workplace and or college ready. So, you know, with, it's a, it's a broad spectrum of what they're indicating, and it looks different for each kid. So, if a student can leave high school with a certification that gives them an employability skill while perhaps getting ready for the workforce and not going to post-secondary right away, maybe another year or two until they decide to broach that, but in the meantime, they're, they're earning, earning a wage.
Have we considered, so, it sounds great, and I, I think it's valuable. I guess the question I would have is, as I'm preparing someone to go directly into the workforce from high school, are we also pairing that type of education with basic finance skills, like how to manage my, a credit card, how to manage a checkbook, how to pay for, how to get a car loan, how to get a?
Yeah, we, well, we're, that's actually, the, they still are meeting all the requirements that it takes to get their diploma. And there is, we do have a personal finance, I mean, we have personal finance requirement that we're putting into health class. We approved that last year, you know what I mean? So, they're still meeting all the requirements that any other student would, you know, some, some of the things they're doing are extra and different, but a lot of them are either, they're, they're going, they're also taking the courses that all the other students are required to. Or, as in, as in with the, um, the pre-apprenticeship, like, they're taking a math course that's specifically geared toward that, for that pre-apprenticeship, but they're meeting, they're taking a math course that, that meets the requirements of mathematics that, that, that we would have been offering to a student as well. So, they're, they're either taking something that is, that is the same course that other students are required to take, or they're taking something that's, that's analogous, but they're also, it's almost like they're filling their elective space with these things that are getting them this, this certification when they get out of here.
And they're being taught by our teachers, which I think is, you know, it's a smoother, easier transition.
And we, we are using Ever5 financial literacy piece that you voted on last year and approved. It was put into the health curriculum into high schools as a piece of that, as online learning was free.
Did the state just approve, or, I, I was reading one of the PASBA emails that we get every day. I think one of them had mentioned that the state was going to implement some kind of requirements for that type of course in high school?
Yeah, well, we, we did it last year, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it was voluntary before. Now, I think it's becoming required.
It's not voluntary, it's markets.
Right, well, well, it's an elective though, is it not?
No.
Oh, no.
I mean, it does.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
Visible and financial.
Correct.
All right.
So, that, it was our, and, and this, this is, this is a push that's coming down from Pennsylvania Department of Education to, to make it so that the students that are not either ready or interested in going on four-year degrees or going on to the military, that when they, when they leave here, they, they can find meaningful and sustainable employment. And that's part of what we're serving here. On to the next thing. So, uh?
Home's your meeting.
It was really home.
That's the, that's the.
You see, you see.
That's not, that's not big.
It takes a lot less time.
Maybe we should all attend the CLI meeting next time.
Did you hear what she does, Jack?
Well, if you didn't ask questions, then everyone can ask much to say.
It's either me or Mr. Rapp, yet so.
No, I know. I know, I think it'll be his turn next. It's Mr. Rapp's turn next to ask much questions, so, here we are. The Virtual Academy of Rollout, it was determined last year that we were going to make a push to develop our own virtual academy, cyber learning within in-house for three reasons. I mean, it's good to have, it's good for us to be serving our community in that way. The, and then there are two possible leap law reasons. There's, there are two, there are two, either regulations or law. I think there are laws, the acts that are on working their way through the Pennsylvania legislature. We'll see if that ever happens, but one of them would say that if we have our own cyber academy here at the school that we offer to our students, then any students that are attending charter schools that are not affiliated with our school, we don't have to provide as much financial assistance to those students. They will bring some of that money in-house. Might also encourage some of those students and parents to come back if we had a cyber option in-house. So, that financially, that brings the kids back, maybe, or bring, or bring the money back, or maybe both. And the other, the other thing that, I can't remember the other one.
It's about fiscal efficiency. So, currently, we have kids at DOL, personal online learning, which is our version of it. And of course, DIU charges a middle, a middle amount, okay? So, by giving that and bringing that back in-house completely, there's, there's a chance to save, you know, some amount of money.
Right. The, the thing I just remembered that I was trying to remember was that there is another act planning its way through that house that might make it a requirement that ours, that every school offers a, their own cyber option. And so, if that ever came in, so if that ever came to fruition, this would meet that requirement, so we'd be ahead of the game there. We wouldn't have to rush to find something by deadline if it already had this. Dr. Sinzerpino has reviewed with five vendors, and the one that she landed on as the best option for various reasons was Engenuity, spelled E-T-G-E-nuity. They are, they are, they are fully iPad compatible. Students wouldn't need to have printer at home. They, they are fully online. Students can access it either at home or we could actually have them, if, if a student didn't have internet at home, we could provide some space here for them to do the, for them to do the classes. The company Engenuity recently purchased Compass, which is a company that we already use for assisting with different, like, supplemental learning opportunities with different students at the school. And because they recently purchased Compass, that would be able to be bolted into the price, so we'd be able to save money. Because we already pay for Compass for our students. They also had the option that we did not have to pay much student, we could pay for a program. So, if we had students drop out, or students added, the price would change. That year, we say. There's a big long list of reasons why. It's, it's, it's a good program if you want to ask questions. I have plenty of time. I didn't even ask much questions, but, but that's the, that is the, that is the group that we would recommend that we go forward with developing a program with, for our students essentially. I forget the amount, how, what was the, what was the amount, thirty-five thousand? Inclusive. And that, it gives us an incredible amount of scalability for students. It's not unlimited, but it's, it's limited almost, it's like, the, the limit is like half the student body of the whole school, I think. Like, one hundred students. So, so that's not, so it's not unlimitedly scalable, but it's pretty, it's pretty scalable.
So, just a, with the thirty-five thousand dollars in context, we're spending about almost eighty thousand dollars out of DOL, like, out.
Right.
So, by bringing those students back in, we're going to, you know, it's a good savings. And then when you take the amount that we also spend on some.
Commerce.
And Compass.
Right, that's about a ten to fifteen thousand. It's substantial savings if you go this way.
It will be saving.
Sasha and Sarah will put that in her presentation.
And how many other students do we have that are on other, like, to Core?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
And we're trying to fish those back in, and the plan that she's.
Yeah, her, her idea was to bring the ones that are with the IU system, DOL, bring those back immediately and then start to make outreach to the other students to see if we can bring some of them back in future years. So, that was our recommendation to, to do that as well. Next one is, we're going, we are recommending an addition of a new class for computer science. Our, our current computer science class.
I'm just going to vote now, please.
They're voting until next time. And I still get to talk to policy because Buck didn't shut up. But, so, we had Mr. John Orm and Mr. Schor do a presentation on a new course that we're going to add called, that they'd like to add, called Computer Science Discoveries. Mr. Orm went to a symposium this year to talk about, it's not called Computer Science Discoveries.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So, we currently have a course called Technology Innovation, Class 747, that isn't really, it's, it's not as good a gateway to the AP courses that we're currently offering in computer science. He wants to redesign that course to make it a little bit more approachable for students with no, with no programming experience. He especially wants to target making, making the class more diverse instead of, you know, just having it be all, all guys in class, you know, essentially, and fiber moving some of the barriers to making it a little bit more fun, a little bit more interactive, and with fewer requirements. And they had actually pulled students, they had a hundred students who said that they would be interested in taking it. They had sixteen that said that they really wished that it had been offered before they entered the AP class, which I said that that was pretty, there's no, there's no requirement for a textbook. The, the spending would be nine hundred dollars, mostly for robotics and circuit kits that the students would be using. And we would recommend changing that chain. We're going to be older, more outdated class and replacing it with this one. And finally, um, realign. And finally, realignment of social studies. I actually would like to hand over the whys of realigning the social studies curriculum over to Mrs. Payne.
Okay, so, you know, we've started the curriculum mapping project, and where the four core areas, three of the core areas, basically the teachers go in, they're lining it, you know, just putting it into the tools, and we'll have those maps. The social studies, we caused Act 35, assessment and citizenship test, cause that group to reflect on where they've been and what they're doing, and is requiring a realignment of scope and sequence, mainly in that six, seven grade and tenth grade. And so she has showing that scope and sequence, we're really looking at realignments, not necessarily new content, it's just a realignment of content. But it will have some cost to bear on in construction materials, six and seven.
Right. We also make that recommendation to do that, and as just an informational piece, our comprehensive plan was approved, that's safe.
All right.
Sorry, I just wanted to roll that.
Any public comment on curriculum instruction? All right, finance.
Probably still keep it less than an hour. We had our...
No one asked you many questions.
We had our finance meeting on the third. The topics of discussion were, you know, the rating, debt financing update, Mrs. Payne's had her call with that. And she also said that we had the state preliminary audit, she mentioned it, there was two findings, Miss Payne's reminding, correct me if I'm wrong, there was related to transportation reimbursement? Okay. One with River Rock students and non-reimbursable students?
Correct.
And one's with the River Rock, it was just a matter of putting those students in the wrong category. So we had money that we had gotten additionally this year that we'll have to just pay back next year. The other one was, the information couldn't be, if we'd have to pay a fee to resurrect the bus track system in order to get the data that they needed. Everything was reported properly, it's just a matter of the school, birth row started shifting the population, and so it's recorded correctly, it's just a matter of saving money. They needed data that we weren't ready to pay them.
We also got into the Act 1 budget cycle discussion. The budget needs to be approved by January the 29th. There is a January 27 voting meeting. However, we need to approve that before the end of December.
Yes.
Because, and then the other reason that is, the new board will be seated in the beginning of December, but the meetings won't be formed. So then you're going to be having four new members that have never been through the budget process before. So at our next meeting, the next budget meeting on the 7th of November, Payne's going to go through the new budget model. I encourage all the members to be there as we're going to be voting to pass a preliminary budget by the voting meeting for November. That way it can be, you know, clean and done, and the new board can start fresh and have some time to get acclimated to the budget process.
So we, we may only have, we still may have three empty seats at that point, because there's only, there's only one that's being contested currently. There's only one person on the ballot.
Yeah.
I do have a question too about the 7th, is that in the 7th meeting time, not that you can change it for me, but I'm definitely not a part of the country at that, so.
You can call in, but yeah, I always try to keep on the first Thursday of May.
So, I mean, I don't know.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, we're only going to have definitely six.
For what, for when?
By the end of December.
Oh, yes.
So that's why it's best, we can just pass a preliminary, so we can get, check that off, you know, the budget November, so.
And the one thing specifically is just to keep all options closed.
It really does progress, it just gets the process moving.
Yeah, makes sense that this card board does it, because frankly, I don't know if we're going to have.
Potentially it could happen.
I thought we, I thought we had agreed that we would recommend to do it by...
Right.
Next one, yeah.
Yeah. The last item was some bad news. The, the, the age history, the age ratio for the 1920s seems to have dropped because apparently people in Mandevan School District are making a whole lot more than they did a couple of years ago, so I...
Yeah, twice as much, or 40% more.
Yeah, I think everybody got a 50% increase.
So all the board members know that there's, each district has a weighted factor that they think, poverty factor that they figure in, that relates to a lot of the questions of aid, but that we get as a district from the state. So Kathleen had showed us, all the years we can steadily, our age ratio, we've been losing money every year that we're getting from the state. So, Ms. Payne's has actually been in a conversation with another district that's had the same issues, and we're kind of questioning the state as to why, and no one seems to have an answer. So hopefully we'll keep pursuing that and try and figure out exactly why our age ratio has been, we've been losing money of that every year or so. Just probably the board members realize what's, what that's all about, so.
Yeah, it's not a small amount, if I remember, it was like 25% or something along those lines, it was pretty substantial. And there was no way that the average salary in the district would up by that amount during that period of time, no way.
Last year, or...
What?
For four years.
It's possible, four years. Well, I mean, if our districts went up 25%, so do everybody else's. So the ratio of age would remain relatively stable.
No, every district's different, so, every ratio of every, every school district is different. So in the county, if everybody in county, there's, everybody in county gets a different amount of money from the state.
Well, I get it, but my point is, if everybody's...
But I'm not sure everybody has, that's, that's...
Well, then they have to, to me, I mean, you have to show how that...
Right, and that's the way to be able to give a second.
So there, obviously there's a lot of goofy parts, you know, that we're going to be talking about as, as our, before this rollout, you know, rolled down our board service at the end of next month, so, you know, with the challenge that the district has with getting a full board, then it's our recommendation to get on the voting meeting for November, so we can pass that preliminary budget. And as I said, the next meeting will be November 7th, 6:15, here in this office.
All right, any public comment on finance? Policy, is Olson, are you going to stand in for Mr. Scott?
I am. And I'm actually looking at the curriculum instruction, next, next meeting is, the date is wrong, but I don't know when it's supposed to be. What date is our committee to hold meeting next month? Is it the 11th or is it the...
It'll be the 14th.
No, next month, yeah, yeah.
Is it the 11th or the 4th?
The 11th or the 12th.
11th.
So that, that meeting will be the 11th as well, so, sorry about that. Yeah, so, policy committee met September 28th. Yeah, that's right. So the first reading, we have a comfortability of services, that is to be updated according to Title I and the SSA regulations, student activity funds, basically that one, it's processes and procedures for managing funds and maintaining records for those student activity funds. 619, district audit, states that, you know, audit will be done by qualified personnel, fund balance, it sets the fund balance that we want to have at not less than 1%, not greater than 8%. It's not hard at that, but that's, that's the goal. 620, 704 maintenance, I actually do not have on this list.
704 is a typographical error.
Okay.
That should be removed from the agenda.
Okay, so 704 should be...
That was asked earlier.
Okay, that was just a mistake, so 704 should be removed from the agenda, I'm sorry to make that agenda edit at the beginning of the meeting. Policy 913 is non-school organization. That's the placing limits on what non-school entities can send homework distributed, we discussed that a little bit at the last meeting. And there are two, two that are for second reading, and if those are approved, those will go into effect at the next meeting. Those are attached to this, to this document. The next meeting will be October 20th, for the next four meetings, I guess.
A quick comment, I told Dr. Cooper this earlier, and Mrs. Olson, I said the same thing, sorry. If you have to try to do rapages that we install for security at the schools, that for visitors, that easy-beezy thing that sucks your ID in, so you have a label with your little picture on it, and you're good to go, so.
Yeah, some of us are not super happy with what our driver's license section looks like, so I wasn't super happy, I haven't done it on my, on my home, but that's okay.
Do they, do they have to, do they have to go through that just to enter, or if they leave the office? Like if I just drop something off for my son or whatever?
If you're, if you're just walking into the office, they do not make you do it.
Okay.
It's if you, it's if you leave the office to go do something else.
Right, all right.
And it actually, it actually said that I was, I was headed to the cafeteria, so if anybody found me somewhere else, I'd be in trouble.
Right. All right, any public comment on policy? Technology committee?
Nothing to report.
Very concise.
We didn't have a meeting.
All right. Old business, previous minutes, any public, or any word comment? Any public comment? All right, new business? No new business from me, although I did want to recognize the departure of one of our board members, Mr. Durso. Just wanted to thank him publicly for his service, and, you know, we were going to miss his, his skill set and experience. And we're definitely, yeah, I mean, it goes without saying, we're probably going to miss it a little bit more than him, but he would say that anyway. But no, like, I, you know, I, I think it's a testament to having a diverse background of people that are on the board, because it really promotes diversity of thought, and also, you know, provides background and experience that not everybody has, and Mr. Durso's proven that. You know, we've laid knee to him for many discussions around, especially when we have to, like, contracts and bidding process and all his work in time with the borough, you know, gave us a lot of insights to, you know, legal situations and all that, and, you know, and I think, you know, the rest, I speak for the rest of the board when I say his, Mr. Durso's never shy about voicing his opinion, but he always did so in a diplomatic and productive way, and, you know, he was a valuable member of the team, and we'll definitely miss him. So thank you again, Mr. Durso.
It's a pleasure.
That's all I have for new business. Any presentations on the public, by, for any topics? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you for coming.